All the meeting. Alrighty, okay, good evening, everyone. Thank you. Welcome to the Talaco City Council Regular Meeting for July 3rd, 2023. Currently 5:30 PM and we will call the meeting to order. Can we get a roll call, please?
Counselor Long is absent. Counselor Baker?
Here.
Counselor Hires?
Here.
Counselor Allen?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Do we expect Counselor Long? Okay, thank you guys. All right, invocation. If we could have Pastor Clifton Loman of First Lutheran, please?
Let us pray. Eternal Lord, ruler of all, graciously regard those who have been set in positions of authority among us, that guided by your spirit they may be high in purpose, wise in counsel, firm in good resolution, and unwavering in duty, that under them we may be governed quietly and peaceably. Enlighten and defend them and grant them wisdom and understanding, that under their peaceable governance, your people may be guarded and directed in righteousness, quietness, and unity. Grant that we remember your generosity and constantly do your will. Bless our city with honest industry, truthful education, and an honorable way of life. Save us from violence, discord, and confusion, from pride and arrogance, and from every evil course of action. Prosper the work of farmers and all those who labor to bring food to our table. Grant them seasonable weather, that they may gather in the fruits of the earth in abundance, proclaim your goodness with thanksgiving. Stretch forth your mighty arm to strengthen and protect those who serve us in times of emergency in our community. Support them in times of tragedy and need, giving them courage and loyalty. Grant them in all things they may serve with integrity and with honor. O God, from whom come all holy desires, all good councils, and all just works. Give to us your servants that peace which the world cannot give. That our hearts may be set to obey your commandments, and also that we being defended from the fear of our enemies may live in peace and quietness through Jesus Christ, your son, our Lord, who lives and reigns with you in the Holy Spirit, one God, now and forever. Amen.
Thank you. Do you want to say on the pledge of allegiance? Okay. Alrighty, in the individuals, we limited to three minutes of speaking time and the cumulative total of all comments from the public shall not exceed 15 minutes. Preference will be given to Talaco residents. In compliance with the Oklahoma Meeting, Open Meeting Act, no action or discussion is permitted by the city council on any issue or topic raised by a speaker during the public comment period. Go into the consent agenda. Items the counselor would like to have removed from the consent agenda. M? Is it Mary? Monkey. Okay. Anyone else? Item U will be removed as well. Anyone else? Yes. As amended?
Second.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Baker? Motion, Carrie.
Is Steve Young with us tonight? Okay, we would like to acknowledge and recognize Steve Young, who has worked in the police department for 40 years. That's a lifetime, folks. That's amazing. Thank you, guys. Do we have anyone from the library here tonight to make a report? Okay, thank you. Anyone from the chamber here to make a report for the Chamber of Commerce? Nathan?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Just a quick update. This is our month that we don't have any events in the chamber, literally the one month of the year that we don't have any of our big events. We do have monthly mingle on this Friday. It's going to be at Cowie Cafe and we are going to be hosted by Surf Pro. So if you guys are free at 8:00 AM this Friday, we'd enjoy seeing y'all and having you out. Leadership Talaco is open right now, so if you're interested in being in Class 26, deadline is July 14th, so make sure that you get us your application. I'll end it there unless I've got questions.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
For Talaco? Hey Gina.
I'll make this super quick. Last month, we won our fifth Red Fed Award in five years, so that was awesome. It was with the overall marketing award for the motorcyclist campaign. And you can go through here and you can see our digital advertising with geofencing and geo-streaming. And it's kind of interesting that these channels that get the most impressions are hulu lifetime discovery, so those kind of go along with what we think of Talaco. Our website numbers are up 273% over last year, and we have our digital advertising in there as well.
Any questions for Gina? Thank you.
Can I say congratulations?
Oh, I thank you very much. Thank you. Main Street, Jamie?
Good evening. We don't have an event this month either, so we should party together.
All right. I know.
And so we did have our Grow With Main Street event, which was a celebrating 20 years of Talaco Main Street a couple of weeks ago. We did consider that a success. We had roughly around 400, we think, in and out over that time. We did bury a time capsule, which will be revealed in the year 2043. I wrote 2024 on my notes, but 2043. We've also added five new board members this month. That is Michael Payne, Shelby Robertson, Tucker Dunlap, Karen Wood, and Christie Campbell. So we're excited to have those new team members onboard. And then Grow With Google. We launched our Grow With Google in June, which helps bring digital services to our small businesses, helps them have a better digital platform. We have a digital coach. His name is Jared Foster. And he will continue to have workshops through the end of the year. You can always look on our website, social media to see when those are. And Community Transformation Meeting, which will be July 19th. Those are always held at the Armory Municipal Center. 5:30, 3rd Wednesday of the month, so this month it will be July 19th, and we would love to have you.
Any questions for Jamie?
That's my birthday, July 19th.
Oh, well, happy birthday.
That's okay. I just.
We'll celebrate.
Called Community Transformation. Okay, we will move right into regular session with item six, Discussion of Possible Action on Items Removed From the Consent Agenda. Have any? M? Yeah?
Item M, yes. I had a question on, and I don't know who to refer this to, on the description, the Talaco, the TRDA Revenue Expenditure Schedule that we have in front of us. Under the miscellaneous revenues, under sale of land, there's a line item, $176,000. And I'm trying to figure out there's nothing listed as to what it is in the description.
Yes, sir. I can answer that question. So that is for the Economic Development Agreement approved with Pravalis. That is revenue that TRDA will, it's a pass-through, so it comes to us and then we pass it on to Pravalis for the job incentive agreement that was part of that.
Who, where does it come from?
The former administration said that they were using ARPA funds for that. And whenever we had our conversation with them last year, as we were getting the initial contract prepared, they promised that amount.
Okay, is Marty, can I, is that, do we, is that, can that be confirmed?
Yeah.
Those have been allocated and this, there is excess ARPA funds available, but it hasn't gone before the body. Or it hasn't been allocated.
Yeah, the city council hasn't voted on it. It was just the former administration. We were, they were a big part of the recruitment process.
And I assume that 176,000 relates to the Pravalis incentive package, $100, not to exceed 176,000. Is that correct?
That's it. Yes.
Okay, I'm just trying to figure out exactly where that money is going to come from.
Yeah.
Because, you know, to vote on that is a big deal, a lot of money, so.
I, that.
Before I.
I forgot to put that in there before it was approved, so that's, that's my fault.
I just, I just want to make sure that that's 100%. I just want to make sure we know where that's coming from.
Yeah.
And they did it actually for last year's agenda is when we had the conversation about that incentive package. And it's actually paid out over five years. So, I mean, if you read the agreement, the agreement that we passed last two weeks ago, I guess, the last council meeting, it's actually paid out over five years, but we had to do it in the one lump sum through the ARPA to be able to transfer that to TRDA.
For budgeting and all those purposes. That's what accountant and legal told us as well, that it had to be all listed in one budget, but it's basically up to 44 new full-time jobs that are held for six months each year. And so 44, but we had to put in the max because they've already hit that, almost hit that.
I understand what it is. I'm just wondering, I want to know for sure where it's coming from.
Yeah.
Before we approve that. And so I've heard ARPA funds, but I just want to make sure 100% for sure that we have allocated that money from ARPA and we're not going to be in the hook for that like out of the general fund or some other place.
Allocated or brought to this body? I don't know what last year's administration promised, but I
Well, it's my understanding that with our funding, we haven't approved anything. We've put it into some different categories, but we haven't approved anything. And so I think that's part of the bigger picture. You know, even Councilman Ratliff, when he was, you know, talking about the sports funding, I think everybody kind of understands that, you know, a portion of that is going to Talaco Sports League or to Anthus Brandon to go, but it actually hasn't been a any of it has been appropriated anywhere. But this is kind of the first step in that appropriation process. That's my understanding.
Do you have any, Marty, do you have any hesitancy as far as that line item, just because it wasn't listed? I just want to see where we're at with that.
You know, as far as the budget is concerned, it's paid out over a five-year period. And so, you know, the 476,000 won't be used in year one, but but I guess the root of the accounting could possibly be that, how do you budget monies that hasn't been approved or allocated? And so that might be the corrective action or procedural way to do it. I wouldn't want to put on a budget just based on an agreement.
Sure. Yeah, and if it's, I don't, I'm going off of legal and accountants that we've got, that this is what they said the appropriate method was, so that's why it goes before both boards. Yeah.
I would, I would say, though, that technically what we're not doing is not approving an ARPA budget with this. Technically, what we're doing is we're approving the budget that has been voted on by TRDA. And so at the end of the day, I guess this council could say, we're not going to give them anything. And they would have to come up with that out of their cash reserve that they have, and that would be the 176,000. I would assume, being the savvy people that we've put on the TRDA and are the executive director, what they would then do is do a budget modification and break the 176 down into the 34 or 40?
It's 44 jobs at 800. I can't do the math in my head on that number real quick.
4800, and they would do a budget modification within their trust meeting to then lower the overall budget that they're doing. And that obviously would have to come back to us because it would be a budget modification like any trust, but you know, at the end of the day, they're on the hook for it. If it's in their budget, it's not something that we're on the hook for. I think what we then have to decide amongst ourselves is, when we do want to start doling out that ARPA money, we have to be cognizant of the fact that we have said through an agreement that 176,000 of it can go to TRDA for this incentive.
That, that is, that is my understanding as well, that this doesn't promise the city paying for it. And that if it comes back that it is not approved through the ARPA funding, then, you know, we'll modify our budget appropriately, and it's also why it's spread out over five years to help with that process as well.
Thank you for that clarification.
You're very welcome.
Dr. Isa.
I'm trying to understand it. This 176,000 per year for five years? Well, that's what I'm saying. Some people are saying it's 176 isn't a budget, so why wouldn't, if they do it, it should only be one-fifth of the amount as opposed to total amount. Why wouldn't it be requesting a budget amount for five years in the future? Should it be requesting the amount that you did fiscal year? And that's what I'm trying to understand what y'all are having with this dialogue. So when you say over five years, I want to make sure that this number is allocated over five years, not, it's incremental. Every five years, we give the same amount to these people. Is that, was that what you're saying?
No, it's 176,000 total.
Okay, that's what I want to find out. No one ever said that word.
With the ARPA money, it has to be, the ARPA money has to be earmarked and spent because of the regulations through the ARPA. So what the city is going to say is we, me, I mean, we haven't done it. What I would hope that the city is going to say is that we are going to spend 176,000 out of the ARPA money and we're going to give it to TRDA. Then, for TRDA is used for economic development incentive. TRDA now has an agreement in place with Pravalis on how that 176,000 is going to be spent. So in theory, what will happen is over the next five years, you'll see that same line item on a TRDA budget, but next year will be 44 times 800. Whatever that number is, it'll be 176 minus that number. And then the next year, it's whatever the next part of that agreement is, then, so all, over the next five years, that 176 is going to shrink by how much that agreement is, and in five years, it'll be zero.
Okay, what you're saying is they'll have the proper internal controls to make sure it's allocated over this five-year period of time.
Correct.
Okay, that'll work.
Thank you.
And I just had a question as far as ARPA funds, just because I wasn't here when this decision was made by the previous administration. How much money is left from ARPA? And I'd like to know how much money is left. And, you know, I don't want TRDA to expect this money and then not have it, enter into an agreement and not have it, just because we find out that we can't do it. I think that's not fair for TRDA. I just would like to know, like, how much money do we have out? How much is allocated where? Because if we've promised this person and this person, this person, or we've, I just want to make sure I understand it thoroughly before I vote.
Spreadsheet I provide you and bring with me that has the date we received all funds, what we've already spent quite, you know, some funds on, and then what's left, and then it's broke out into when council approved the allocation, how that's broke out. Going straight from memory, I'm thinking 176,000 or 179,000 was actually the remaining balance. And I didn't bring the budget. But I provided it.
You said 179,000?
The allocation from.
Right, so my understanding is there, based upon the budget that we just passed in June, is that there's $2.1 million in the ARPA funding. And quite frankly, none of it has been expended. None of it has said, this is what we're spending any of this money on. Now, we've put it into some buckets, but even at the end of the day, that bucket can change. Well, sure, but I don't think that that's, that's not what we budgeted. That's not part of the two.
Internal spreadsheet.
1.4, Keith.
Yeah, 1.4. And now that 1.4, we had the allocation from council for the four, five items. And then there was a remaining balance after those four, five items.
The remaining balance was one. Okay. Okay, I'm just making sure I have a clear understanding of that. Thank you.
Questions for voting? Line item M? Motion for line item M?
So moved.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Baker? Counselor Allen?
No.
Thank you. Motion, Carrie.
Line item? U. It's too good, I couldn't read it. U. Any explanation or questions on U or anyone? Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I just request that we remove the name of Mark Pritchett from that item. He is not going to be joining the team.
So moved.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Motion, Carrie.
Item number seven. Presentation of the Completed Season for the Operation of Facilities Use Agreement with the Talaco Sports League and Acknowledged Receipt of Annual Accounting and Certificate of Insurance from the Talaco Sports League. And we have the Talaco Sports League President Trey Ratliff sponsored by Brian Speed. Thank you.
Council, thank you guys for having me. Good to be on this end of the thing. I think most of you in front of you, you've got, the agreement, was the agreement included in the packet?
Nope.
Okay, so just kind of give you a gist of how the agreement, how the agreement works with the city of Talaco and the sports league is essentially, our agreement is for every game that is played at the complex, that includes soccer, softball, baseball, flag football, and there's a men's full potential sports. It's a men's league that plays under Coach Greg Hall. They play on Sunday afternoon. So essentially, we as the sports league have been tasked with somewhat managing the facilities. So in the event that somebody wants to hold a tournament or wants to have a league, that channels through us. And so we kind of make sure that there's no overlap, that, you know, teams aren't scheduled at the same time on the same field and so on and so forth. So for every game that gets played on Phoenix Park, the city charges us, I'm sorry, for Phoenix and Anthus, the city charges us five bucks. And so in lieu of a payment to the city, we've, we've worked out in that agreement essentially, where we have the opportunity to reinvest our funds back into, back into the city, back into the facilities. Okay, so if you look at the chart in front of you, you know, last, last fiscal year, so from July 1 of '22 until June 30th of this year, we played 928 total games. So as you see on the breakdown there, that's Talaco Rec Soccer Club, Full Potential Sports, Talaco Sports League Baseball, Talaco Sports League Softball in the fall and in this spring, along with our Flag Football that took place last fall as well. So if you do the math, that's 928 games times $5 apiece, which is $4,640, what we should have owed to the city. On top of, we, part of our agreement also sets out for our tournaments, so we had four, four tournaments that actually made, we paid $250 per tournament to the city. So we got an additional $1,000 there. So our total amount that should be due to the city for the usage of the fields is $5,640. Like I said earlier, instead of making a payment per the terms of the agreement essentially is what we do is, instead of asking the city to purchase things like seed, things like fertilizer, things like infield, infield material, those, those items that we purchased, those items that we purchased and put back into the fields for, I mean, if you look at the soccer field, there's one right there in the corner by the wall that's got a really, some of you probably noticed, if you've been out there, it's pretty spotty. So the grass doesn't really grow in some of those areas. And so we've spent some time and energy and resources putting, planting in Bermuda seed in those spots and fertilizing in those spots in front of the goals. In front of the goals, we've put fertilizer and seed in front of those spots where they get real worn and torn. Same thing with, you know, the lip on the softball fields where you're, you know, outside of the, where it should just have a pretty clean lip where it goes from the infield to the outfield. You know, we've used some hydro seeding to kind of create some, some growth in that area. So it's been success. And it's been a really good relationship, I think, from the, you know, from the city and, and the Talaco Sports League. Hopefully, moving forward, it will be a little bit easier to navigate. You know, while I'm not sitting in one of those chairs, I think it'll make it a little bit easier as far as, you know, the communication and channels, proper channels of communication. So hopefully that'll be easier. So that's kind of the breakdown. You know, I try to keep, I try to keep our spend, our reinvestment back into the ball fields pretty close to what we would typically owe the city. That way, it's not real lopsided one way or the other. You guys have any questions about the about any of this? I did email a copy of our, which I think is kind of an unusual, you know, I did email a copy of our financials, so you guys should have a copy of the financials in your in-mail inbox in addition to our certificate of insurance. So that should be on file, too. While I got your attention, just real quick here, I want to show you guys, one of the things that we are dealing with is Phoenix Park. And so, you know, one of the challenges we ran into this year was Phoenix Park is, you know, we ended up having to shift. And we had, just this spring alone, we had 763 kids sign up to play softball and baseball. Usually our league game nights will be Monday night, Tuesday night, Thursday night, and occasionally some tournaments and whatnot on the weekends. But Phoenix is a problem for us. It, it was a problem four years ago. We've spent, I think, as far as city resources, I think, you know, in the last four years, I think the city's probably spent close to $60,000 or $80,000. Most of that was four years ago when we put new sod on some of the infield. I don't think there's a video that's attached here. There was a video that shows. And it's not included here, but we had a light bank, so we had a light bank short out early March, the week before the season started. And we had TPWA come out and look at it, Gary Stevens, a gentleman named Kelly Grant, who's a commercial licensed electrician here in Talaco, and basically had them kind of look over the facilities. And if you look really close, if you look really close past that trash can, you can see a, in the background, there is a black, they call that squirrel paper. So when I went to TPWA four years ago and expressing some concerns about the electrical issues of the lights, so I've been told by, by both Kelly Grant and Gary Stevens from TPWA, these lights are 480, 480, so I think a standard outlet is 110. This is 480, what they call direct burial, which essentially just means that the con, there's no conduit, it's not sleeved, and it just goes directly into the ground. And so the issue, the issue there is, there's little to no protection. So if you're standing in a puddle, it might feel like lightning hits you as soon as we turn the lights on. So the city has deemed basically that for not to use the lights at Phoenix Park for a multitude of reasons. One, just because of the risk. TPWA, four years ago, wrapped all those telephone poles and those junction boxes in what they call squirrel paper to try to keep it safe. I guess the squirrel paper is worn off and we're no longer safe. So I've got some serious concerns about being able to, you know, utilize Phoenix Park at all. One of the biggest inconveniences for us was having to switch and not being able to play night games throughout the week. So when typically you would have, say, eight games at Phoenix, eight games at Anthus, and now we're having to do somewhere in the neighborhood of 22 to 28 games on a Sunday. And so we're in the Bible Belt, it's a God-fearing community, and trying to tell half of the kids that play sports with us that they have to play on Sunday because we don't have lights went over like a lead balloon. So I only, only say that because, you know, I'm looking from this body, there's some discussion of ARPA funds. You guys know how I feel about Phoenix Park and how I've felt about Phoenix Park. I think that our kids deserve better than this. I think that it's just a continual challenge, and I hate to see us as a community continue to dump money and put lipstick on this pig. So I'll just run through this. These are some of the backstops. This is, you know, preseason, what our bathrooms look like. That's what the bathroom looks like outside. So I'll just run through this. These are some of the backstops. This is, you know, preseason, what our bathrooms look like. That's what the bathroom looks like outside. And that's essentially, that's, that's all I want to do is just show you there. So thank you for your time. Anybody have any question?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number eight. Correct. Discussion and possible action to approve, approve with modification or deny ordinance number 1360-2023. An ordinance amending the City of Talacua City Code Part 11 Parks Recreation and Cultural Affairs. Counselor Allen?
Uh, yes. So this is a. When I ran for city council, the number one agenda was the homelessness issue that we have in Talacua by the biggest margin. So we started looking, started speaking with the police department. Looking at city ordinances around the country, just from me being a citizen, started looking at. What we can do from every facet to help this problem, you know, we, these are people, we need to help them. But at the same time, we need to make sure that our parks are safe, our streets and roads are safe. One thing that, that I noticed immediately, especially in the winter, not so much right now, but in the winter, right around Norris Park, we had, we had a lot of people sleeping in the park, and they almost always had a shopping cart right next to them and everything that they had in there. And it was an issue. This is something that multiple people have talked about. I mean, I can't count how many times I've had this conversation. So contacted our city attorney and I said, hey, what can we do as far as ordinances? We want to make sure that we are doing everything that we can. And, you know, we came, we thought this might be a really good first step. So basically what this does is this ordinance says that a shopping cart can only be used for the purpose that it was intended. And please, you know, correct me if I'm wrong. We can use shopping carts in the Walmart parking lot, you know, and Lowe's and save a lot, but we can't take that, we can't take that cart outside, roll it down the street, put everything we own in it. You know, my wife can't grab one and, you know, throw everything in and go to the park and, you know, have a party. It's a safety hazard. And also it, I think this is, we need to address this, the problem that we're having in, in a lot of different ways. And I think this is just another step to kind of help us keep our parks not cluttered and, and discourage people. Utilizing a shopping cart for something that wasn't intended in our city.
Thank you. Any questions? Comment? Just discussion.
Yes, correct, correct. Man, this is the first reading of this ordinance. So this will be back on the next city council agenda for final action.
Thank you so much.
I, I do have a question in the sense, are you? Comfortable with these definitions, terms and, and so forth? So.
Yes, sir.
And ambiguity or anything like that?
I feel the, the definition provided in the ordinance is sufficiently clear so as to put the public on notice as to what is being prohibited.
We'll move on to number nine, please. Discussion and possible action to approve, approve with modification or deny ordinance number 1361-2023. An ordinance amending the City of Talacua Hotel Motel Tax Ordinance, and that is presented by John Tyler Hammond.
Mayor, members of the council, this ordinance, before you deny it, does amend the Talacua City Hotel Motel Tax Ordinance. Since 1987, the City of Talacua is contracted with the Talacua Area Chamber of Commerce and, and a quasi governmental role to provide tourism services on behalf of the city. That relationship, not the relationship, the structure of that relationship has proven sometimes difficult to work for both the city and the chamber. So the city and the chamber sat down and proposed a new mutually beneficial understanding. This is a companion item to item 16, which is the new tourism contract. We need to update the ordinance to allow the relationship that the City of Talacua have, the City of Talacua and the Talacua Chamber of Commerce have negotiated. Happy to answer any questions.
Counselor Hires?
So my first question. This, I mean, essentially kind of strikes the Talacua Area Chamber of Commerce out of the ordinance altogether. And it's my understanding that there. The way the hotel motel tax was formed and voted on by the people, that the chamber becomes the fiscal agent of such. And so the way, and I could be reading it wrong, so I'm not a lawyer, but the way I read it, it, it almost seems like you're striking the chamber and then it's open up to whoever we choose to enter into a contract with. Not just the, not the chamber. But I think that there's the language that kind of. Ties our hands to the chamber with this tax.
So I, I, I think your read of the ordinance is absolutely correct. It, it does give the city the freedom to contract with whoever it desires. I don't want to do the legal analysis in public because I've not had the chance to fully consider it, but there is a provision of the Oklahoma Constitution which prohibits cities from levying taxes for the benefit of a particular business company organization.
Right.
Whether that, whether the ordinance as drafted violates that, I'd want to think on that. But certainly that raises the constitutional concern about leaving it as is.
Because it's my understanding that it's not. That. We're not raising money for. The chamber or the tourism council, really. I mean, we, we're mixing those two, we're those two organizations, but it's really the tourism council. We're not raising money for them, but they are the fiscal agent that is in charge of quite essentially spending that money that the city collects. And so the city collects it, and then they are the people that we have deemed. I don't know, worthy, I don't know what a better word, there, those are, that's the group that is to spend, that is supposed to spend the money as per the ballot language and the contract that we've always had in place. And so I don't have any issue with the contract that's next in the agenda. My issue is I just want to make sure that we're not creating a can of worms with, or some ambiguity with the, this ordinance by striking the chamber completely and then making, you know, the general public think that now that's a, a contract for services or that's something that can go outside of that tourism.
So I, I think certainly it could be read that way. The concern about allowing it to go to a, a different agency and mainly mistake, there's no one in this administration opposing that. But I, I think that's a fair observation, councilman. As, as I read the ordinance as it is right now, certainly there is a concern that it may conflict with the Oklahoma Constitution. I'm not saying it does. I'd want to research that further. Secondarily, the ordinance may not provide the, as written, may not provide the, the, I'm not looking for, the protection that you may be feeling it does. It says the city will contract. So the city will contract for a single penny. To me, that's compliance. So the, the concern that you're raising is valid. I think it's more of a political question than it is a legal one.
Any other questions for the attorney? Yes, Dr. Uzo?
This is number years ago, before y'all were here, I was a party to this thing. Basically, the Chamber of Commerce promoted it. They had billboards all over the highway interstate. They wouldn't remove them on Saturday, Sunday. And then we, we have this permanent tax that we, that we get to keep so much and we have to give it back to someone else, which our idea is well founded because those are the people that actually had the benefit from it directly, the total proceeds. And I, I don't think they should be actually have one entity in perpetuity receiving that money. It should be other people with the management skills and ability to use those funds to properly market the city. Okay, and I, I just, is that what you're saying? It's not, it cannot only be the chamber.
I would, my, my concern is, does the, whether the Oklahoma Constitution allows a city to dedicate a tax to a particular group outside the city's control.
Right.
Uh, I'm not saying it is, doesn't, or doesn't allow that. I'd want to think of, that's certainly my concern.
Okay, right. I would think that you would be able to, just like you said, open the opportunity to other people to participate in this because basically we get to take so much that we, basically goes to the hotel. Okay, we get 4% of that, we have to rebate them on some type of basis or something like that. So we're talking about a substantial amount of funds, especially with the construction of the Cherokee Nation, and there's only one hotel in the town that benefits by it. There's only one, and I don't know how it's going to complicate Native American jurisdiction because of different issues that Cherokee Springs. So thank you.
Thank you.
I was just going to point, you're only talking about the new tax. You're not talking about the hotel motel tax. In, that's the whole package. You're only talking about the one tax, tax that was voted on for the substantial hotels two years ago, three years ago. So there's a bigger picture than what you're trying to imply.
Counselor, I, I do have just kind of a, you're more concerned about the monopolization. Am I, am I correct?
Correct. I, I, I'm concerned whether that is consistent with the Oklahoma Constitution.
That's all I need.
Anything else?
Clarification question for legal. I was looking through the ballot, and the ballot actually names that the people voted on names Talacua Area Chamber of Commerce. So I'm, I've never really understood ordinance ballot, how that whole process works out, and I'd really like to understand it.
So under the Oklahoma Constitution, before the city may levy a tax, the tax must be approved by a vote of people. And the only thing the people will see is, is the ballot language, which, which what's actually on what you cast your vote upon. That ballot is supposed to be a summary of the gist of the proposition. That cannot trump the visions of the Oklahoma Constitution though. So I'm sure it said that in the ballot. I've not seen that. It's from 1987. So I'm sure that is true. Whether that is consistent with the Oklahoma Constitution, I'm not prepared to say yes or no, sitting here tonight. So I'm hoping to avoid having to look into that question by saying we will contract with an external third party, and that third party, we want to be the Talacua Area Chamber of Commerce.
I believe, do you have a copy of that ballot? Thank you. Fine print.
Can we receive that? I'm sure if we.
He said we could. Give us just a second to look over this, please.
And certainly, again, as it's presented, it certainly does say that the Talacua Area Chamber of Commerce. But the question then becomes, is this consistent with the provisions of the state constitution? And I'm not ready tonight to say if it does or doesn't.
At the end of the day, though, there's not a change. I mean, at the end of the day, we're changing the ordinance so we can then approve the contract. And at the end of the day, really, what needs to happen is that we need to have a contract in place with our tourism entity.
That's correct.
And so even if I think, i- if this gets us A to B and then, or A to C, and then we have to come up ma- potentially and clear up B a little bit, then we could do that at a later date.
Thank you. Any more discussion on item number nine? Seeing none? Oh, I'm sorry, Drew.
Sorry, Drew Ailey. I believe there was a attorney opinion given in 2006 from Drew Edmondson that said the city could change the agent. Had the authority to change the agent. You might want to. Follow up with that.
I'll see if I can find it, sir. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, sir. Dr. Uzo, if you'll wait till you get to the microphone, please. Thank you.
They get to get 96% of all the amount we collected, they've returned to them. And this ballot actually indicated that when people voted for it, mainly just because everybody wanted them to vote for it. We get 4%, and it's supposed to be earmarked for one particular organization. I don't think people even read the ballot. They just voted yes.
Thank you. Anything else on item nine? Move into item 10, discussion.
We, we need to either, uh, so it's because the ordinance is not, if the ordinance is not approved, we can't approve item 16. So we need a affirmative up or down vote on this item.
Now, this one doesn't need to be. Second reading or anything like that?
Because we, because this ordinance does contain an emergency clause to allow the city council to approve the Talacua Area Chamber of Commerce's contract tonight. So if the ordinance is approved and the emergency does not take effect, the contract cannot take effect until after this ordinance is proved, or is takes effect, which would be 30 days from the date of its publication.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
No.
Thank you. Moving then to item 10, discussion and possible action to declare ordinance number 1361-2023 an emergency?
As I explained, council, we, this ordinance must become effective immediately in order for us to sign the contract immediately. Given that there are only three of you here, it does require unanimous vote to declare this an emergency.
Or motion? Or further discussion, I guess?
I mean, it's really all hinges upon that we don't have. A tourism contract in place. And so tourism. Money is being spent and they're not, it's not being reimbursed. For some reason, it was fine to not have a contract in place for. Nine months out of the year, but the last three months out of the year, all of a sudden, it's now, we're not reimbursing those expenditures. I don't know what's changed in those three months. I could guess. What has changed? So I mean, I think that it's, it, it's important that we put, that we have to get this contract in place. I mean, we're in the middle of summer in a tourism town, and we don't have a contract in place. And so I think this is getting us to. That point. And I think this is also getting us to a point where. We're able to spend the tourism dollars effectively like we should.
Any other discussion?
I just, he mentioned that the chamber hasn't been reimbursed. Why? Can anyone speak to that? Why is the chamber operating and not being reimbursed?
The chamber or tourism?
I'm sorry, tourism, my fault. Tourism.
Tourism's been reimbursed.
We, we've been reimbursed for most of our expenses so far. We're a couple short, but the checks are on the way from what we've been told. So at this point, tourism expenses are okay. It's just starting, from my understanding, talking to John Tyler, that starting July 1st, no expense that we're currently accruing will be paid back until a contract is in place. And to Stevens' point, we're. For June expenses for the parcels that we turned in.
It's just weird that this is on the agenda and now all of a sudden checks are on the way.
Their last.
That's all I.
Their last check run for the fiscal year was Friday, and checks went out today. Gina contacted me, I contacted purchasing, their checks were stuffed in envelopes and held for them to pick up.
Did they get all of the reimbursement that they have put in for?
I haven't seen yet. I can't say I would.
Sure. I, I owe, I signed off on everything they turned in. So yes, they were fully reimbursed for the month of June.
One of them was from the 26th, was the check date, so last Friday. One of them was from June 12th. There was some, some circumstances with city staff that caused that to get pushed back a week, so. But the, to Stevens' point. Gina's got a lot of ads that are happening right now, and it's, it's busy time. And so if we didn't have the contract for the month of Ju- of July or something like that, then there'd be a lot of expenses that. Are being incurred to.
And maybe for the purposes of clarification, their, their legitimate expenses that they incurred as of midnight on June 30th will be reimbursed. And I, I said legitimate, not to say that they're illegitimate, just the, the expenses that were reasonably incurred and performance of their duties that we've asked them to do will be paid. But any expense as of July 1, there is no contract in place as of this moment.
If you'll wait till you get to the mic, please.
This is the point of comment, just for y'all information, the amount of that 97% basically paid for that hotel out there. I did a cash flow back in 87, and the 7%, the 97% reimbursement actually paid for the hotel. And I objected to repeatedly a permanent tax on all this stuff because we're billing this man a hotel out there. And if ever they ever disregard it because the chamber wanted to promote it. And now we're discovering that there, I, I didn't look at this. I was looking at the permanency of the tax. You know, there's one direct benefit from the organization that was promoting it. Thank you.
There's a little bit of confusion on that part.
So, so there's two different hotel motel taxes. There is a 4% that was passed in 1987. That's the ballot that, that we're talking about here. So, so there's two different hotel motel taxes. There is a four percent that was passed in nineteen eighty-seven. That's the ballot that, that we're talking about here. The city retains three percent for admin expenses. Ninety-seven percent is put into the tourism fund that the city holds and they currently. Once we send the dispersal and they reimburse us those costs. That's what we're talking about. What Dr. Uzo is talking about is just a few years ago, there was a substantial hotel motel tax of six percent passed. And four percent is held out for admin from the city. Ninety-six percent is given back to somebody who builds a structure. That meets all the requirements of that substantial tax, which is eighty-one rooms, all those things that, that the true is the one that. Currently has the rebate. And it's they collect it, the city takes the process, they keep their four percent, send ninety-six percent to the true. Because they built that hotel, met the requirements. And so it's two different taxes. That we're talking about that Dr. Uzo is referring to. That one just started twenty nineteen, I believe. Twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen was when that one was, was voted on.
Anybody can qualify for that.
Anybody that meets those requirements can get that.
Go build a hotel tomorrow that meets the requirement.
Yes.
And qualify.
And and that, that is held separately from the, the hotel motel. We don't. The tourism contract does not talk about that. The city takes care of all. We're just talking about the four percent from nineteen eighty-seven.
Thank you for that. Drew, did you have anything you wanted to add?
What's in the, what's in the contract?
Which contract?
The new contract.
That's item sixteen.
We'll get there.
Oh, okay. So we'll be able to see what's in the contract.
Thank you. Were you saying something?
It was somewhat of a legal, um, you know, the four percent what he's talking about. If the city was ever to um increase that four percent from four to six, you know, when we did the substantial tax, there was a lot of uh. Comparisons going around. So would it be held, would it be bound to the same restrictions of the funds? The future tax was increased.
It depends on what that future tax would say. So you could say we're just striking four and it's regarding six. Or or we're saying we're striking four and striking the whole purpose. It could be used for something entirely else. So it depends on what is actually presented at the time.
Thank you. I have a quick question. By um striking the part of the ordinance, the hotel motel tax ordinance that removes the chamber, what? What keeps the city from putting this out for? For bid, for lack of a better word. I mean, what?
Political will.
Anyone else?
It means who administers the tourism contract is a question for the city council to decide.
Okay.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
All right, can you repeat that?
Uh, Counselor Hires made the motion and Counselor Baker second. Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Move to item number eleven. Discussion of possible action to approve, approve with modification or deny supplemental agreement for inspection services. Not to exceed one hundred and seventy through two thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars and forty-six cents. Provided by Lochner Engineering. And we have our airport manager, Brian Lambert.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council. We've discussed this a couple times before, so. Got our numbers correct and everything. Uh, this is for services that have been provided at this point. So Lochner's just trying to get their agreement updated to match that. The funding for this, which we didn't acknowledge, will either come from. The liquid air damages with the current contract. Or through the bonding company if we move that direction.
Ryan, I, I believe on this, we're going to discuss this in executive session.
Yes, I'll, the one part on executive session, but no, this was included.
Mayor, I would propose that we table item eleven until after item nineteen.
Number twelve. Discussion of possible action to approve, approve with modification or deny case number three dash two oh seven three zoning slash resolution zero seven zero three. Dash twenty twenty-three. A resolution to amend the zoning map from residential, single-family, medium-density district, which is RS two. And general commercial district C two to regional commercial district C three. To use the property for vehicle sales and rentals on a property located at fifty-two thirty-two South Muskogeeak Avenue. More particularly described as follows. Lots one and two in the east half of Lot Three, Block One, Sharon Hills, City of Talalqua, Cherokee County, Oklahoma. Mr. Tannehill.
Counsel, uh, this is a pretty straightforward zoning change request. Staff and. Uh, planning commission recommend approval of the zoning change requested. Uh, just to give a brief uh historic context of the property. A property was plotted in nineteen sixty-six for residential purposes. That property was uh what was then in the county. The city then annexed the property. Uh, in nineteen ninety-eight and at the time of annexation gave the uh current zoning designations. Uh, the site was formally used as a car wash. Um, as I stated before, planning commission recommended approval of the zoning change. We did not have any objections at the planning commission meeting. Uh, the applicant is here. There's specific questions uh for him. Otherwise, I'll entertain questions that you might have.
I have a question. And it, it, it does pertain to this. But it's something I read in the paper. Um, but part of it talked about the. One of the issue was drainage and that there was not going to be any new surface. That's paved other than what's, it's going to be repaved, what's there. So there's not going to be any drainage. But then there was a, just a small thing that said that we're going to put a temporary building on that site. Can you, can we do that?
So um I haven't spoken to our building inspector about this, but I believe the applicant has. Um, I think what you're referring to are modular structures and that type of thing. When we updated our zoning code, um, it's not as clear on the modular structures as it was before, even though it wasn't clear back then. Uh, but modulators can be used essentially for emergency situations. However, if the, if the structure is built to commercial building code and it's. You know, built as a commercial structure, it can be placed there. So a temporary is a term that doesn't always coincide with a modular structure, but. The applicant may be able to explain that a little bit further.
So essentially, it could be like a, a modular structure, but. In that it is brought, moved in, but it doesn't necessarily look like, I mean, it's not, I'm not. When I read it, I was kind of envisioning like a trailer sitting out there on the lot, you know?
Right.
Like a RV or something.
So that would not meet commerc- commercial. Uh, and the structure would have to meet commercial building code.
Any more other questions? Yes, I'm Dr. Uzo. Thank you.
I do have a question. If you all try to drive out of Talalqua to go to Muskogee. You notice all the D O T construction.
Right.
And I think it's premature to have this free zone until that situation is remedied. Because most people are using Stick Ross Mountain Road, Road to get out of town. If you want to go to the river, you go, go on to the other way. So I think this is a good idea, but I think it's premature. We don't want to have any more congestion. In my opinion, attempting to drive out of town at this particular point in time. Because of the traffic jam past Del Rancho. And the Cherokee Nation where they exited. So I would recommend to you, it's careful consideration approving this. To have any premature activity on the property if you do approve it.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Comments or questions from the council? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Motion carried. Great. Thank you so much. Item thirteen. Discussion of possible action to approve, approve with modification or deny resolution zero threes, I'm sorry, zero seven zero three two three nine three A. A resolution to supporting the City of Talalqua's application for safe streets and roads for all grants program. S S four A, a program supporting the U.S. Department of Transportation's National Roadway Safety Strategy. Mr. Tannehill.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so the agenda item report basically outlines the purpose uh of this request. Um, uh, to kind of paraphrase here, the U.S. Department of Transportation has five billion dollars to spend over the next. Five years uh from fiscal year twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-six. And uh that money is used for making our streets uh safer. So. Uh, the first thing that that this grant application requires is an action plan that can be funded through the grant. And so we're requesting two hundred thousand dollars uh from the federal government with a twenty percent match to uh develop. Uh, the action plan. After that's adopted by council, uh, through public input. And through a committee to help steer the action plan, we can then apply for larger grants to implement. Recommendations from the, the action plan. So that may look like things uh like lighting on streets, uh curbs. Um, uh, increased shoulders in some other areas. Um, those are just a few examples that might come out of that action plan.
Just so we can have some clarification, um, now this is for the two hundred thousand for the grant itself. Of that, we put in twenty percent?
Twenty percent, yep.
So ten percent, I would assume would be twenty thousand, so forty thousand. To develop an action plan.
Correct.
That's a pretty hefty uh action plan. Um, I'm just. Does it going to cost forty thousand dollars to develop a plan?
Uh, so I did reached out to two engineering firms to give some guidance on how much an action plan uh would cost. And they both came back with two hundred thousand dollars would be enough to do the action plan somewhere between one fifty and two twenty. And so not undershooting uh us uh for that request. Wanted to put the two hundred thousand dollar uh number in there. And again, our portion would be forty thousand. And the, the feds would be a hundred and sixty thousand.
But this is just a plan that's going to cost two hundred.
Yep. And if you look at what was awarded last year for action plan.
Yeah.
Uh, very similar numbers about, but again, ranging from one twenty to two fifty, depending on the size of the community.
Okay, so, but it's not going to be a cut and paste.
No, this would be generated from the community. I mean, public inputs required. So we would. How this would work would, we'd send out an RFQ to engineer.
Okay.
That do these plans. They come back and they say we can do it for this amount. And then um. Uh, they come into our city and get all the facts and, and, and all that and develop the plan for us.
Where would the forty thousand? Be allocated from what, what, what account or where from?
Yeah, so what I've requested in the gender report was um going back to ARPA funds. So ARPA. Uh, has a line item in there in our budget for grant matching. And there's a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in that fund for grant matching, which is broad. It can be. Suppose you could use it for any grant matching.
Of that two hundred thousand. Would we be guaranteed any of that additional funding?
We would be guaranteed the limits of the grant award. So a hundred and sixty thousand dollars would be. What we would receive from the uh highway administration.
Guaranteed?
Yes. If it's awarded.
If it's awarded.
Right.
I'm not trying to be difficult. I'm sorry.
You're not.
I'm just trying to. Spending forty thousand. On two hundred thousand or two twenty. And then.
Maybe.
Maybe, and then we'll get a hundred and sixty thousand. Possibly. Of that, we, do we need to pay any additional funding to receive the hundred and sixty or?
No.
I was just trying.
No, no, this, this grant will be written in-house. Uh, already started some of the grant writing there. Uh, the deadline is next Monday, but I've, again, I've, I've. Wri- written most of the grant. Uh, I need some letters of support from other agencies in the community. And those will be sent out Wednesday if this is approved.
And so um what potential? We get the grant, like what kind of money can we get from the federal, federal government to do things in our community? What's the potential there for us?
So. We get the grant, get the action plan approved and adopted by council. I believe minimum projects for the implementation phase is two hundred or two million dollars. So we'd be looking at projects that would be two million dollar projects.
So it'd be not, not the hundred and sixty, it would be the two million.
Two, so we would ask for two million, again, a twenty percent uh match on those implementation, but we'd have time.
I wasn't getting that either.
I was trying to, I wasn't trying.
It's another grant. So we'd apply for this, we'd apply for another grant. But we can't apply for that grant until we have an action plan.
So this gives us the opportunity to get the money.
Yes, I'm sorry if that was.
If we don't dot this I, we can't get in the ballgame.
It's unavailable. Yeah.
Yeah.
Others, other cities will, will go ahead.
And, and this will actually make the city safer uh as well.
Yep.
Okay.
That's the intent.
That makes, I feel a whole lot better now.
Okay, my apologies.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you so much. Item fourteen. Discussion of possible action to approve, approve with modification or deny lease between TRDA and Cherokee Nation at one oh six West Shawnee Street. Talalqua, Oklahoma for Prevalis. Mr. Reed.
So this is a lease on a portion of the Foundry Building downtown. Um, we are just doing the event space portion right now to get Prevalis in a more permanent home than the temporary site they're in right now. They've got some big clients coming in over the next couple of months and they want to show them that they're in a permanent facility. And so. Um, this one is only for a little over four thousand square feet of that building. And um gives them part of their permanent space long term. And they're going to put about eighty people in this portion of it. And um, the lease with Cherokee Nation, they are current owners of that site. Um, part of the economic development agreement that we worked out with Cherokee Nation purchased that site and they're leasing back to us for one dollar per year for twenty-five years. And so um. We're paying the additional costs there is, we're paying thirty-eight percent of yearly fees, property taxes, fire suppression. Um, monitoring, things like that. We pay thirty-eight percent, which is roughly what the square footage is that we're.
Um, who, who pays for utilities in this agreement? Do you, do you, does Prevalis pay their own utilities or is this?
Once Prevalis moves in, they will pay for utilities. Right now during, when, when this is all approved and we're doing construction, this timeframe is in our name right now. Um, but once, hopefully August first is our date and then it'll switch over to Prevalis and they will be in charge of paying utilities. Okay?
Any other questions?
And this, that building is a little weird. It does have separate meters. That this space is on, so it makes it very easily divisible on the utility.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Uzo?
What I'd like to bring your attention to this is that the. You noticed that Talalqua Regional Development Authority apparently sold some property. Uh, Lot Fifty-six to the Cherokee Nation. Okay, if you look at the date and time that they did that, okay, it was on the, the twenty-first and it was at two. Two nineteen P M. They did not acquire title to that property and filed a record until twelve thirty. So to me, I would think there was a title issue problem. It, it's an instrument filed day, not the con- the other one. And as the dates of the instrument, what I'm concerned about is whether this. Transaction of conveying property, you know, is appropriate, so.
Thank you.
That's not this property.
Correct. All right. Other discussion or questions? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Item fifteen, discussion of possible action to approve, approve with modification or deny a loan for TRDA with local bank. In relation to the economic development agreement. in relation to the economic development agreement and incentives provided by Optimi LLC. Mr. Reed?
I'm getting jealous. Taylor getting to give all these reports.
I wouldn't mind it all.
So we're on now is for the loan through local bank with between TRDA and local bank. This is to cover the cost of purchasing renovation of the sites for Prevalis. This is part of the agreement that we approved at the last city council meeting. The loan amount is for 1.5 million. That is to cover from what we've talked with construction managers and things like that, that should be what takes to renovate, purchase these sites to get them in the proper condition for Prevalis to move in. We I've I've been doing a cash flow sheet to make sure currently our our bank account is at a level high enough that with the leased funds that we will receive back from Prevalis through the economic development agreement, that we will be able to cash flow this deal and still never go under $100,000 in the bank account. So it cash flows at a very promising rate. That also includes our regular operating expenses. So in the cash flow, we take into consideration any kind of operational expenses. We keep line items for maintenance. We keep line items for utilities, insurance, all those things to keep legal, accounting, audits, all the things that are required. Those are part of our operating expenses that we take into account every single year. So those expenses plus all the expenses that we promised to Prevalis are in the cash flow projections, and we do cash flow it with keeping six figures in the bank account. Prevalis does pay lease on this site, starting in year six. So after five years, they start paying us a lease, year 10, it goes up. And once they start paying that, it pays for the the payment that will be required on the 1.5 million that we take out. So I I did put together, I've through another organization that TRDA is a part of, Hammersey. I wanted to kind of show, that's a lot of money. And so I want to show what impact that money is going to have on the community. So I had a gentleman work up an impact study. We know right now the number that Prevalis has is 170 jobs that they've created in the community so far. And so if I'm looking at the 170 jobs per year right now, the change in earnings, so this is what people make in the community. So it's impacted by $6,783,709.
Per year?
Per year. So that's the increase in payroll earnings that Prevalis has created. And they'll do that each year if they don't add another single job, just the 170 that are currently here. Once you take into consideration where they're going to be, what they're going to be doing, there's direct, indirect, and induced jobs that will be created. An additional 17 in the community. So 187 total jobs currently that have been created. Change in taxes, because they're not a sales tax producer, the change in taxes isn't quite as much. But right now, there's $113,926, $113,926 increase in taxes. That is state, local, federal. So it's not all local, but the breakdown is mostly in local. Those are a big portion of property taxes. So it doesn't necessarily relate back to the city's prop, uh, sales tax line. But whenever you've got 6.783 million dollars more in payroll, that is 100% going back into the city's sales tax line. They're projected by about he said, four to five months. So that's October, November of this year. They project an additional 120 jobs to be created. If you haven't seen it, they are having job fairs two or three times a week in different communities. And so what they're, what that's doing is they're going to have 290 jobs in the next four to five months. And so I also prepared a a impact on what 290 jobs will do. And the increase in earnings from the 290 jobs is $11,572,209 per year. Increase in earnings that Prevalis will provide to the community. Total of 319 new jobs, 290 being Prevalis, and additional 29 being from other businesses in the community that are growing because of Prevalis's presence in this community. Taxes increases almost $200,000. This is, this is why TRDA felt it crucial to recruit and provide incentives to a company like Prevalis. They've proven this in three other communities. They're currently looking for their fourth location, again, a small community rural community that they'll be going into. They have multiple contracts that will be being signed. People want to come to Talquah because we have the workforce. We've got a higher end workforce than a lot of their other rural communities because we have NSU, and we have the capabilities of internships and cybersecurity. And so the jobs that are going to be created here have the potential to be second tier IT jobs, not just your basic support jobs. And so long term, I know this looks like a lot of money that, and it is, but it pays off very quickly with the amount of good, high paying jobs that will be being created in the community. And I'm, I've got any questions you guys have, and I'd be happy to send the impact studies out. I was working on them last week, so I didn't send them for the full board, and they are extremely confusing. I had to have the guy come over and read it to me. That's the only way I could give a good report on them. But I'd be happy to sit down with any of you and and go through or anybody that wants to come take a look.
So I have a question. I I I want to start by saying I am really in favor of jobs in Talquah.
Sure.
But I I have been, I've been working on this today for over six hours.
Okay.
And and I just have a couple of questions because I know how important it is. I'm 100% know that we need jobs here. We need to develop Talquah. According where, you know, we're one of the fastest growing communities in Oklahoma.
Yeah.
That means that we need to be, we we really need to be on the forefront of thinking.
Yeah.
Okay. But I do have some concerns. So I I have a question first. How much money is in your bank right now?
Right now, we haven't, we purchased the Workman site with cash reserves. So right now, we've got just under 500,000 in the.
Under 500,000.
But we will, once we take out that loan to pay ourselves back, my cash flow started as what we had.
Okay, so I'm just, right now, I'm just thinking about the loan. Okay?
Yes.
We have 500, like 500,000 in the bank after you purchased with cash the Workman's building?
Yes.
Correct? Okay. So you got a, and based on your comments at the last meeting, you said that we've been running a deficit every year. And you're looking for revenue streams, consistent revenue streams.
Or so. We do have a couple of leases that we do right now. So we do have our our revenue this year, our budget, I think, take that 176 out, and it was about 125,000.
Yes, and I and I saw that. My question is, is I I know that this is through local bank, right? So how does an entity like local bank loan an organization that is running a deficit every year based on your, what you said, one and a half million dollars at just under 5%? What is the collateral that's being used?
The site. The building is worth, the appraisal that we set had, it's right, worth right under $2 million.
So they're they're appraising Workmans for right under, just Workmans for under $2 million?
When it's, when the renovation is completed, it'll be worth right.
That's the collateral is just Workman's?
Yes, the building.
Okay. And that has nothing to do with the industrial park?
No. Industrial Park is not part of this.
Okay.
It is, it is remaining pre and clear.
Okay.
That was a requirement. It will never be put up for.
Okay, and I'm I'm thinking about, I'm thinking about TRDA in the future. Thinking about its ability to provide economic development for the future. Okay? And my question is, is I think I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm always thinking about what if at the end of this amazing package, right? That you're providing for Prevalis to come here?
Yeah.
Which is $176,000 in benefits, which is a reimbursement of $10,000 a year for five years for insurance, property insurance, which is no rent?
For for the additional five years?
Five years. The only thing that Prevalis is paying for is utilities?
Utilities.
Correct?
Mm-hmm. Well, and.
And furnishing.
Furniture and equipment. They'll pay payroll for all their employees, everything.
Yes, but what I'm saying is that to do business in Talquah, the only thing that they're out is and I know that that other communities do incentives like this to bring in businesses. I get that. Okay. But what I'm saying is like at American Woodmark, when their incentives, when their incentives ran out, they left. They were gone. Okay? What if Prevalis at the end of the five year incentive package, and they have to now start paying their lease, they leave? What happens to all the money that we, what, where are we then? Because I am, I don't want to make a decision and vote yes on something that will hurt TRDA in the future.
Yeah.
Because I believe in TRDA. I believe in Talquah. And I really hope Prevalis stays. Does that make sense what I'm saying?
It does. It does.
I don't want to be five years from now, they take off out of town. And we've spent all this money. You know, the other issue that I have is that we're spending money on a building that Talquah doesn't own in Teague. That's owned by Cherokee Nation. So we're using, so part of this 1.5 million is going to be used to renovate that building, which we don't even own.
Correct.
Correct?
Yeah. Yeah, a little bit of it will be. Yes. Most of it will go into Workman.
So how much do you think will go into the Teague building, roughly?
The, well, the Teague and then the Foundry Building, that that whole building, it's under $500,000.
So under $500,000, if Prevalis walks, then we just, the city has spent, or TRDA, not the city, but we're a trust together, right?
We.
Together. But I, that's what I'm just saying. I totally, I'm I'm saying I want jobs. But I want to make sure that we do it responsibly so that we can, so that if Prevalis in five years says, let's find another community that will give us this sweet deal. And then we're sitting here going.
Totally understand. So.
That's where, that's where I'm at. And I'm just telling you, I haven't I have not, I am a little frustrated in the fact that I have spent six hours today running around trying to get information, which should have been presented to me so that I can make the right decision.
Yeah.
Because I don't want to be the person that holds up progress. But I also don't want to make the the decision that will hurt our city. Does that make sense what I'm saying?
Yes, sir.
Like I, I just, I'm thinking about this from all the different angles. And I just know so many people who worked at American Woodmark and and when they took off, I saw how it affected them.
Yeah.
And I know that a business is about one thing, the bottom line.
Yeah.
It's not personal, it's business. And I know that that it's easy to find. I just, I just want to make sure that we're making the right decision. And I know that every every time that we have to make a decision, it's a gamble. But I just want to make sure I really understand it before I vote yes or no.
Yes, sir. Totally understand that. My first comment would be feel free to always call me, and I'm happy to walk through anything with you. If I didn't provide enough information, I'm happy to provide whatever you need, talk it out through with you, questions that you've got, I'm always available. Just reach out to me and we'll knock it out. I'll spend six hours with you if I need to, to make sure that we're both on the same page. The difference between Woodmark and and this one is we still own the physical property. So the, if if we invest this in the Workman site, if they were to walk, we're still going to have a $2 million asset that we can then use for economic development, bring in another company, rent to other people to help pay the note. So we're still going to have physical assets in TRDA's name that we can use to create economic development. And so that's what the board has looked at, and they say, okay, even if it comes down to it, we're still going to own assets. That's why most of it is going into the Workman site now as opposed to the Foundry site. There also are, you are talking about what's Prevalis going to have in it. There are also certain portions of portions of the renovation that we're talking to them about currently that are above and beyond what we have promised. We promised a white box. And so the ones that are above and beyond that, Prevalis is going to have to step in and help us because we're not going to just keep giving out money. Like you said, we're not going to keep giving out money. There's going to be a portion that they help us with. So it's not going to be 100% that we have to take on. It's it's a gamble. Anytime you bring a company to town, it's going to be a gamble. This one, because of their past experience, before we recruited them, we visited them in Bruton. There was a group of us that went down and saw the site. They've been in Bruton for over five years, many years. They just did a 55,000 square foot expansion before we went down there. So we got to walk a new facility. They're very invested in in Bruton. That's their headquarters. Jasper, Texas is the second site. I called the Jasper Economic Development Director and talked to him for an hour. What did you do? What would you not do again? Did you make the right decision? Are they doing what they promised? And the actual agreement that we have is a version of what they did in Jasper, except I reduced a lot of what Jasper offered them. They've now been in Jasper four years and continuing to grow, still doing, they've now partnered with Stephen F. Austin, and it's a couple hours away from Jasper, and providing internship programs. Same thing, they've already started here with NSU. So they've proven in Bruton and Jasper that they come and they stay. Jasper's incentives, the big piece of them ran out in three years, and they're continuing to be in Jasper. So I feel a little more comfortable even that, hey, they're not going to run away once incentives run out, once they have to start paying the lease. Manning, South Carolina is their third site. That's where they were going into. They were finishing up that whenever they chose Talquah for their fourth site. They have met the 100 jobs they were supposed to to put in in Manning. They're still there after two years now. Still going strong, doing what they're supposed to do, meeting all the requirements and continuing to grow and be happy. They're looking for their, we were their fourth location. They're looking for their fifth location right now because they continue to get more contracts than what the current sites can handle. And so they're continuing to grow. I rarely do I feel this confident about a company because they're in, they're in an X code that nobody's recession proof, but IT is a little more recession proof than typical companies. Because the contracts that they have are with these, I mean, Ocean Spray is a company that's coming to town. They're, they're one of the companies that's coming in August to do a video because they've signed on with with Prevalis here in town. They've got multiple Oklahoma companies, which is why they chose Oklahoma is because the state said, if we're going to contract with you, you're going to be in Oklahoma. So we've got a state contract with them. A lot of contracts that will require Oklahoma and rural in this area. So I I feel it it helped. I was with you when I first started. I I I'm always skeptical because you get RFPs all the time in in this line of work. And so when a company comes, it's used Volkswagen and and Mid-America, for example, they're, oh, well, you didn't give us 1.3 billion, so we're going to go to Canada or someone. You know, we're not on, we're not on that level, but you know, we're, we're on that level that we have to be cautious and make sure that we vet the company really well. And I feel like with the team that we had doing that process, that we all feel very comfortable with the the deal that we put together.
And I would just say to to also talk about American Woodmark in where we are. So American Woodmark, you're absolutely correct. So they came in, they built the building, they did it in the industrial park at the time. And then when there was incentives involved, when they but when those incentives ran out, what happened is then we owned a building, which we own the asset. And then it's really because of that asset that ended up being sold, that now we have cash reserves that we're able to do this this deal and, you know, procure these loans, procure that thing. So in some ways, that's an example of what can happen is when when you start putting the the debt equity into the deal, then you have the asset. If the deal were to go, if if the company were to go somewhere else, you're held with the asset. And you can liquidate the asset and have a cash reserve that can allow you to move on to the next project. Or you could hold the asset and look for the next business that can then turn around and go in there or or operate. And so in some instances, you know, it's Woodmark leaving and then selling that that building is what is put TRDA in a position that they were able to float this deal where we are now. And so, I mean, I think that kind of shows that the equity piece there that you have when you build up the asset and you have it to, that you have it to own and build these forward.
And I, and I get that. So so here, so just to summarize.
Yes.
If in five years, they stay for five years, they employ all these people, which is wonderful, right? Five years, they walk. You go crud. We still have this loan.
Yep.
We've got to pay it. Let's sell the building. Let's pay off what's left, right? What's the maturity of the loan? So you're asking for 1.554 million. So like in five years?
Oh, yeah.
What will you owe? What what'll be left to pay?
I would have to go back and look because we're on a construction loan.
Would it, would that building cover, like you could pay off what you did?
Yes.
So basically.
As is.
We have employed for five years, we've employed all these people in our community. And and so if they were in five And, and so if they were in five years. Would you be worse off or better off if they walk? Given, getting this loan. Then you are right at this moment without taking out the money.
It depends on which way you look at it because we'd be worse off because we don't have 290 jobs anymore. But monetarily, we would be in the same position. Um, we'd have the asset, every dollar that we're putting into it. Two options, they walk and we still have the asset or every penny that we're putting in the contract states, that's what they're going to buy it from us for. When they exercise the purchase option. So every penny that we're putting in now, they're going to be giving back to us the purchase. So that's one of the two options that happens at that five year mark. So we'll know.
Um, the other question that I have i- is about, um, TRDA's ability, if you enter into this, this agreement.
Hmm.
To do other economic development with other entities. Are you maxed out? Like if you do this, are all your eggs in the Pravala's basket for the next five years and you're not able to do other things?
No, actually right now.
You feel like you're in, what do you think?
Uh, right now, we just, um, closed on property at the, I'm, I'm excited I get to talk about this. We just closed with a developer at the, um, Business and Technology Park. We, um, worked with him. He purchased two acres and he's putting up a 15,000 square foot building for us. Um, I say for us, it's, we're going to work to fill it. Whenever Backwoods Foods closed and that building was available. Uh, there was at least six or seven, uh, bit different businesses that. Some of them came to town, called us, wanted to be kept in the loop of when that building becomes available. Now, because it was closed on, had they. Put it in a receivership, so it was taking a lot longer to go through the process. But so many people reached out to TRDA. Um, Jason Wright at Century 21 had several people asking about it. So Jason is who the contract is right now with TRDA to list the property out there. He, a guy approached him and he said, I want to do this at that park. Well, we didn't, it was, started out as mini storages. Our covenant state, no mini storages. That's not really what that land is supposed to be used for. So we worked with him and we were able to find a way to, um, he's going to build a 15,000 square foot building with all the specs that it needs, similar to the Backwoods Foods. And then Jason and I will, all the recruits that come in, the prospects that come in that were in that range, we're going to be. Sell, we're going to be marketing this building too. And so it doesn't hinder all economic development. Will we be able to do a big package like this? No, that, that'll, it'll, it'll hinder big packages like this, but it's not going to hinder economic development. That we do, especially because the Business and Technology Park is, um, free and clear sale. It's not included anywhere in this deal. And so we'll still have that. I, I filled out just last week, um, the state sent out an RFP for somebody needing 20 acres to create 187 jobs. So I was able to fill out on that because we still have the greenfield sites that we need to be competitive. And so, no, it doesn't stop economic development in the community and we're still going to be going hard at them. Um. And, and if the time comes and we need to find a bigger package, we've got some awesome partners in the community that I believe will step up with us.
Oh, Stephen. TRDA didn't own American Woodmark Building. They own the parking lot. Which is what they sold. The American Woodmark Building sold for like. Nine million dollars. Something like that. That's right. You remember?
I wasn't.
Now they, Scott sold it. So I just remember that they didn't own, actually owned the building. American Woodmark took a huge hit on that building, which they. Or something were praised for, and they sold it for like seven or I want to say nine, the Cherokee Nation, but it was the parking lot. That ended up with the money to TRDA. Then one other, only I have one question about this is why downtown? Why put them downtown?
Yes, sir. And I'm sorry, I don't know your name.
I'm sorry.
I don't know your name.
Ed Hayworth.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Um, I don't mean to sound any unappreciative of anything anybody's doing, but. Uh, we talked about bringing jobs to town and that's a, that's a good thing. But, and I'm just sitting back there thinking, I can't name you three people that are looking for work. I mean. You know what I'm saying? Everybody wants to work is working. Uh, and so we, so we create all these jobs and we have to bring people in. To complete those jobs. And everyone says, well, that's more tax money, which. Eat up in fire protect, protection and police protection and all those increased things. And I don't understand. Why we want to be Tulsa. If that makes any sense at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Uzo.
I'm, I'm trying to understand the context of this situation. They, so I understand it. They sold it to Cherokee Nation. Okay, this building. Okay, they paid the real estate commission, then they want to lease it back. Okay, well, that, that doesn't really make, why would you want to sell a piece of property? Okay, that you have beneficial use on and have to pay a commission on it, then want to lease the property back from some amount. This is a Shawnee property. I don't know which portion they did or what they didn't do. But it, it seems like. They're, they're selling it and wanting to lease it back. That, that's a lot of things that people do for a bit. This is the government. You know, you know, what are they going to do with the rest of the money that they got out of it? I have no clue. But, but the fact of it is, it doesn't seem feasible to get that. You know, pay a commission on it, which you real estate people are entitled to. They brought the buyer there and everything. And then go, you know, lease the property back. So for some reason, I think the public needs to understand what the logic is on that. When you sell it to somebody, they lease it back and pay rent. So that's basically it.
Thank you. Council, have any other question or?
I, I think that there needs to be some clarification there because just. For minds to be clear, TRDA didn't buy a property. Sell it to, or sell it to the Cherokee Nation and now they're leasing it back. The Cherokee Nation was a partner in the much larger. Uh. Picture of this development and through that partnership, the Cherokee Nation purchased the Foundry as part of their economic development. Um, help to Talakwa and understanding the jobs that are going to, that are going to be created through this. And then as through that partnership, they were then in turn leasing, are leasing it to TRDA. Who then is leasing it to Pravala. So it wasn't a TRDA purchase. Then they sold it to the Cherokee Nation and then they sold, now they're leasing it back.
Uh, and, and the reason it, it makes to, to that point, you know, if we were paying fair market lease on it, that probably wouldn't make as much sense, but we're paying a dollar a year for 25 years. Um, and we still kept all of our cash assets to invest into it. Um, into the workman site for that additional space. So that's why. Um, leasing it makes sense at this point as opposed to trying to. 1.3 million is what they, that Cherokee Nation has invested in the purchase of those sites. And so it, um. We didn't have to borrow or expend that. It was, um. Cherokee Nation that did, and now we're leasing it for roughly $25 for, um, 25 years.
And I would just say that this is a perfect partnership. This is what we've talked about. As a community for years. This is a, this is a project that is bringing all of the partners to the table. To get something done. This is a partnership with the Cherokee Nation, with all of our school into, with education. I mean, with. From NSU to ICTC to the Public Schools Partnership. The City of Talakwa, TRDA, the health, our healthcare system has been involved in a portion of this. I mean, this is truly. Bringing all the partners to the table. This is the kumbaya story that we have been talking about for years and years and years. In this community and now it's coming to fruition here in this building. And I hope that my. My hope, my goal, my prayer is that this is the spark of something greater to come for what Talakwa is. And so I'm just.
To that point.
Super proud of.
Yeah.
You know, this deal. And I hope that the council would see fit in moving it forward.
To that point, the, one of the main reasons they chose us was they came to town in April, 2022 for their first site visit. Um, their president and their VP of Facilities came. And they said they'd never seen a group and a community get together like that. We had, um. Mayor Catrin was there. We had Chief Hoskin. We had, um, myself representing TRDA along with Josh Hutchins, our board chair. Um, Stephen was there to, to represent city council as well. Um, we had NSU with President Turner. We had Tony Pivik with ICTC. Uh, every partner that was in this community, all the partners that we go to was, was present and was happy to be playing their role. Um, since that, they've all continued to play their role. It is. There's no one organization that can, can really. Take all the credit for this. It is a community effort and it's been, it's been really great to see. Everybody come together and, and play a part and be a role in it to really improve Talakwa. I, I did want to say to Drew's point, why downtown? Um, that's a requirement from Pravala. Wanted to pitch the Business and Technology Park, but their requirement is they want to, they go into rural towns. They know the rural towns heartbeat is they're downtown. They want to help with the heartbeat. They want to be a part of that. And so they require downtown, um, sites. Usually they don't need 30,000 plus square feet, but, um. This community is providing the workforce that they need and want. And so, um. They, I, I love that the jobs are here and I love that they're, they're going to be growing once all those 290 people are downtown. Um, those restaurants are going to have a heck of a, of a lunch rush. And so that, to me, that's how we're going to have the sales tax number growth. We're going to have. Um. Some benefits from, from Pravala's being in town, more than what we're, the payroll and things like that. So. I hope that answered your questions. Um, I still stand by it. Anything that, any questions, this, future, anything like that, I am happy to sit down and, and discuss with you.
Honorable Mayor members of the council, the, the matter before you tonight is to approve that indebtedness with the local bank. Uh, that does require, because there's only three of you here, it does require it to be unanimous. It does not become a debt of the city. It's exclusively a debt of TRDA. You're just ratifying that debt.
Thank you. Without further discussion, is there an? Um, or questions? Any motion?
But I do have a. A question regarding that you just now stated that this is a loan. Between. The TRDA. And. The local bank, we as the city are not. In, in obligation.
That's correct. Not, not a single dime of tax dollar will go to this out of the city general fund.
Pardon?
In the event, in the event TRD cannot make its payment, it cannot come after the city. The city's tax dollars will not be used to backstop this loan.
Your motion?
Can I ask a question? When, when does this loan hat, like? If we, because I'm just going to tell you, like I, I'm, I, you know, you're, you're rattling off like the, what you said. And I, it's hard for me to, to really understand it if I don't have it in front of me, if I don't have time to look at it.
True.
Those numbers and, and, you know, I, I'm taking you at your word.
Yes, sir.
Um, I, I, I'm totally, I don't want this, this to die. I don't want, I, I totally agree with you. I almost saluted his shirt when he was talking. Um, about the deal, like I, I believe in Talakwa too, but at the same time, like I, I want to see the numbers. I want to see the cash flow chart. I want to see. For myself, you know, I, I just, I want to see it. And my question is, is if we don't do this tonight, can we come back at the next meeting? And is that going to kill the deal? Is that going to kill? I mean, I need to know what the ramifications of not taking action tonight on this is. For you and for Pravala's and for everyone.
They are on a tight timeline because they've got, um, CEOs of large companies coming in to see the site and it's on a, get it done as fast as possible. Um. So it, it, I'm not going to say it would kill the deal, but we need to move it quickly so that we can keep progress moving forward and get them in these sites. Um. Whether it goes through tonight or you table it for the next meeting, um, I'm still. You call me Wednesday morning and we'll set up a meeting and I'll walk you through every, um, every piece that you have questions about. I'll. Give you the cash flow sheet. I'll send it over to you, all that stuff. And I'll walk through it with you and show you all the numbers that I've got. Um, where, how I came up with, um, the projections on, on loan payments that local bank gave me.
And can we, is it possible, I don't know, is it possible for us? Cause from, from speaking today, from multiple people in the city. There's a lot of these questions that came up.
Okay.
And that, and I think that communication. Not only with, with us, but with the community to every aspect of this deal is really important.
Yeah.
So that everybody is on board. Um, so that everybody understands exactly what we're doing, how, how this came about. You know, even what Pravala's is, because I still have those questions. What's Pravala's? What's going on with Teague Building? What's going on with Workmans? But is it possible for us to have like a meeting where anyone in the city that really wants to answer these questions can meet with TRDA? And we can ask these questions and we can feel, so that everybody can feel really good about this and we're not walking away. Going, what did we just do? Can we do that legally?
Absolutely, Councilman. If a majority of the council, of the city council is going to be there, you have to call that as a special meetings that would require 48 hours notice. But as long as a majority of the city council is not there, you could have that with as anyone you would like to have to be there.
Okay.
How, if, if my board wants to come and also be part of that, would I have to do a special meeting in conjunction?
I, I just, I, I think that would be very helpful. For, for all of everyone bef, you know, before we get into a 1.5, 5-4 million dollar loan for all these questions. Cause like I said, I went around and talked to everybody and most everyone that I talked to. Had major questions that had not been answered. And, and I, I just, I feel like if we're going to do something like this, that could really be this great. I don't want it to die. I want Pravala's to be like, wow, we just want, we, they want to be on board. They want to make sure everybody understands it. I don't want anyone in the city of Talakwa to question what we did. I want to be totally transparent. I want to, you know, this is what's happening. This is how it's happening so that we can all feel good about it.
Yeah. And I was, I mean, TRDA is a public trust. Our meetings are open meetings as well. We post them and, and go through the proper processes. People are welcome to come to ours at any point in time. Um. I'm, I'm happy to present the numbers. The reason, a, a lot of times the reason that they haven't been given to the public. Um. As much as what some might like. We actually required confidentiality agreements that we can't share a lot of information until announcements and until. You know, until deals are done pretty much a lot of times. Um. Like I said, we, we met in April, 2022 with Pravala's. And been working on it since January, 2022, but we couldn't even say anything until they announced in September, 2022. So nine months. And we had this big project and we were so excited and couldn't tell anyone. So a lot of times we don't get to share the details. And you know, the job numbers, the, that's why I wanted to bring the impact is to show the impact that those numbers will make. I, I feel like that's important to share and once the deal gets underway, the ribbon cutting that we'll be doing. Um, Chief has already said he wants to be at the ribbon cutting and, and help do all that being his, the Cherokee Nation's portion. I know Suzanne is going to want to be there. She's been a part of this the whole time. Um, making sure that the deal keeps going. So the, the, the people have been, that have been involved to, to get it there.
Um. Might I suggest that we call a special meeting on Friday? To address, and that would be within, I mean, tomorrow's a holiday. So Friday is the earliest we could.
I'll be there. You tell me when.
I, I want this to happen. I just want to make sure we, I know everything.
And we appreciate that.
I'm making the right vote.
Yes, sir.
I understand. I don't like to vote on anything that I don't really understand.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you. And I want to say that I'm very proud of the council that has taken the time, and it's all three of you that are here tonight. To ask questions and to be inquisitive and to, to go the extra mile. And I appreciate that very much. I think we all do. So, um.
Do we need to make a motion to table this?
Well, we make a motion, take no action.
Just take no action and if, if we're going to call this special meeting on Friday, that's what we'll do.
But is that convenient to the other councillors?
Yes, I'll be there.
Okay, um. Whitney, you can be there. Okay.
We'll get, we'll get something said. As soon as this meeting's over, we'll get it posted.
Yeah, so we're going to look at, um. Noon on Friday. See how that works for everyone. Pardon? Yeah, that would be a pretty big deal.
That'll be good, yes.
Yeah. And that gives us plenty of time to comply with the Open Meeting Act and to be in, in compliance. So is that a special meeting? This is a special group. Okay.
I, I just want to say thank you. I know that was a long talk.
That was okay, Josh.
But thank you, Nathan.
It was good. Thank you for raising issue. So we'll do it, um, right here. So we'll do it right here in the chamber at noon on Friday, special meeting to discuss the Pervolus.
Real quick.
Yeah.
Josh, I'd, I'd like to make sure that we get together because I want to make sure it's specific information that you'd like to see and that you think others might want to see, so I can be fully prepared and ready for it.
Thank you. So we'll take no action on item 15. We'll move into item 16. Discussion and possible action to approve, approve a modification or deny a tourism agency contract between the City of Talawatua and the Talawatua Area Chamber of Commerce for the provision of tourism development services. That's your own attorney.
Honorable Mayor members of the council, we've been going for about two hours now, so I'll be very brief. The purpose of this contract is to change the relationship between the City of Talawatua and the Talawatua Area Chamber of Commerce. Prior to this contract, the Talawatua Area Chamber of Commerce has acted as a quasi department of the City of Talawatua that's required them to produce individual invoices, individual receipts, and have each of those items individually approved by the City of Talawatua. That has proved cumbersome and, and at some points less than efficient. This new relationship will transition the city, the, the Talawatua Area Chamber of Commerce from that quasi city department to a true external partner. What will happen is we will, through this contract, approve a grand total budget, making up a number of $100 that we will portion out to the Talawatua Area Chamber of Commerce in four equal installments for 90 days. And they're going to spend that money in the manner they determine best. They don't need to get pre-approval of the city on what they're going to spend that on. We are trusting them to be the tourism experts that we, we know they are. And then that will be, they will use those funds until the next quarterly installment. They have to provide us monthly financials showing what they've done with the money. That's not for approval purposes, just to say here's how your money has been spent. The budget will be the top line. They have to produce that budget to us, say we plan to spend $5 here, $10 on that. As long as they do not exceed the grand total, they don't have to come back to us for approval on changes. They just have to notify us as to what those changes are. Instead of spending $5 here, we're going to spend $6 on this. That doesn't require city approval, just notification. At the end of this, they must also produce an independent audit, which would verify what they've done with, with the city funds. The contract will go from year to year and either side can get out of it within 90 days' notice. Happy to answer any question.
Does the contract comply with all state laws, Will City?
Yes, sir. And talking about what Mr. Haley had brought up, Attorney General Drew Edmondson back in 2006, I was able to find that opinion. This is consistent with what Attorney General Edmondson said back in 2006.
Questions for the attorney? Are all members of council present tonight allowed to vote?
Yes, I, I did look at it. That is, yes, they can.
Okay. Okay. Motion or clarification on a question? That's all right.
I'm sorry, I missed the figure. I missed the number part that you said. So it's going to go out for 90 days and there will be, how many, what was the dollar amount?
I, I don't recall the total budget. That's going to be a question for Nathan.
Fourth of the budget.
The fourth of the total budget.
He said $100 just because he's simple with math.
Oh, yeah.
That's what he said.
So is there a portion of that? Is that all to be spent on marketing or is that a portion, a part of that?
As part of their budget, they've said, they've allocated X number of dollars to marketing, X number of dollars to personnel service, X number of dollars to, you know, some other third thing. And again, as long as that doesn't exceed the total though, that budget is just a projection for the city. It's ultimately for the Talawatua Area Chamber of Commerce to manage those funds in the best way possible.
Roughly, how much marketing, how much?
I'm not familiar. You'd have to ask.
Nathan?
Yes. What's the budget we've already, that we approved in June that they submitted?
Right. Pardon?
I mean, I have the budget in the packet.
They don't have packets.
It's also in the, in the budget. It's already been approved, so.
Okay.
And it's online.
Okay. Gotcha. So will this something, will this be something that will eventually be open for bid?
That's not the intention of this administration.
If it's a yearly contract, does it need to be?
Automatically renewed.
Automatically renewed.
It will automatically renew every year unless the council takes affirmative action to get in that.
Give that ID.
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Which is how the current tourism contract is and has been for years and years and years until
Tonight.
last year, when the mayor at that time decided not to renew it, then never brought a new one forward. Which is why we don't have a tourism contract.
Right. So just to be clear, so the city can enter into a contract for almost a half a million dollars? Without going out to bid?
That's correct. There's no obligation to bid professional services.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Nathan?
Just for clarification, the, the budget that's attached to this person was the one that you guys have already approved. The total top line, I believe, is $393,000. That's a projected 10% growth over previous years. We've consistently had about 20 to 25% growth. So we, we felt like we were being pretty safe with just a 10% growth. And 200,000 of that goes to direct advertising, which is specifically for commercials, TV, radio, billboards, streaming, Google Ads, that realm. 200,000 of that goes directly to that. An additional 50,000 goes towards the Christmas experience that we're trying to turn Talawatua into a four season destination. Winter is the first one because Christmas is something that I think everybody in Talawatua could get behind. And so investing some of the tourism funds into creating that tourism destination in a different season other than spring and, and summer and fall, we've got pretty well covered because of foliage, fall foliage and the colors are beautiful, motorcycle rides. It's whenever all of our motorcycle conferences really pick up. All in all, it comes out to about a 7030 split advertising and administration, 70% being advertising.
And then one question that I have, because I, I'm just sharing a concern that was brought to my attention today. With this new change that we've done, there's some citizens that feel like there's going to be less oversight in the money in our tax revenue that we're collecting. So will you speak to the oversight? Will there be an audit done so that we can account for all the tax money that's being spent?
Yes, we currently provide an audit every year. That has been a requirement of a contract in years past, so we always provide an audit of both the chamber and the tourism financials. We, oversight actually, it, it, in my opinion, it's kind of up a tick from previous contracts. More reporting, the financials are required to be sent over more detailed than they've been in the past. And so the accountability isn't going to take a hit. It's, we, we can't spend anything until you guys approve the budget. That's how we come up with what the numbers are going to be for in and year out. And so they won't be, it's not just the same every single year. It, if we're doing our job well, you'll see that 10% growth. And pending, you know, COVID or anything like that, again, you'll see that growth and, and we're being judged based off of those results. And so with that growth, we'll change the budget each year. But you guys approve the budget, you approve the line items, same as you've been doing. And then we report back specifically what we're spending that money on within those line items. But instead of sending it over as a dispersal for reimbursement after we've already promised and signed contracts to, to do these tourism advertising, we then have that money to spend at that point. It's, it's kind of the big difference. So we're still held accountable and if we're not doing our job, then, you know, this body has the opportunity to tell us we're not doing our job well and put it out for bid.
One, the thing that really make, you know, stands out to me, and I know that you said that it might not, we might not be, you know, this might not be kosher for some people to put this, but the initial statement that they voted on in 1987 mentions the chamber. I, I think that's important to think about. I'm not saying that, you know, we're entering into a perpetual agreement for the rest of our lives, but I think that that's important to note that the City of Talawatua did vote to do this, and that was listed in black and white. And the chamber was listed. And I, anyway, I, I think that's important. I think we work for the taxpayers and that's really important.
Yes, sir.
And Councilman, to be clear, what you, what you identified there, the, the proposed contract does require them to provide monthly financials. Should they not provide that monthly financial, they will not get another check until those monthly financials have been provided. If that takes them six months to get it, it takes them six months, they don't get a check for six months. And lastly, they must provide an audited report at the end of the year. Should they fail to provide that audited report, the contract automatically terminates.
Anything else? Move a motion.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Counselor Hires.
Yes.
Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you, thank you. Going into executive session and we'll be back shortly. Yeah. And I was asking for a vote for that. Do we have a second? Do we have a second, please?
Second.
Counselor Hires. Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Baker. Motion carried. Reconvene into regular session at 7:58 PM.
Honorable Mayor, members of the council, the council did convene an executive session as provided by the Open Meetings Act and is provided on the agenda. On item 18, as relates to the discussion relating to the employment of the city administrator, at this time, I do believe it would be an appropriate motion to approve the contract with Taylor Tannahill to become city administrator effective immediately.
So moved.
Second. Who said so moved?
Me.
Oh.
I thought Ray said it.
I thirded it.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Hires. Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Motion carried. ET takes over for Ray Ray.
I would say speech, but we've been here a long time.
Love it.
Make him sit, at least make him sit at the chair for the last two items.
He's okay. We're getting out of here.
All right. On item number 19, concerning the discussion, pending investigations, H and G paving, at this time, I believe no action is required. And on item 20, discusses the purchase of real appraisal of real property and is located in the City of Talawatua. I believe the proper motion would be to authorize the purchase as discussed in executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Hires.
Yes.
Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Last, last thing on item number 11, Mayor, is the supplemental agreement with Lightning Engineering for 175,000 some odd dollars. At this time, I believe an appropriate motion would be to approve that agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Counselor.
Not at this time. It's allowed to be confidential until we sign the deal.
Said the attorney. Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Hires.
Yes.
Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Motion carried.
That's all we have, Mayor.
Attorney?
What the purchase have, though?
Yes, 801. Maybe, but sure. We did. We do.
We did. Oh, oh, thank you very much. You're too kind.
What time is the meeting on Friday? Isn't that noon? Okay, yes, thank you.
I want to talk about midnight.
Oh, yeah.
You talk about that, especially on Friday.